Hey guys, welcome back to my YouTube channel. Today I'm doing another quick like revision slash study session again. Literally, it was all of these in this folder. It's just work, that studying that I've done. But I stapled them into subjects, so. That's all science on like drugs, particles, smoking. That's on maths. And then I just did one on computing and one on geography. Geography. And computing. But I don't know if I should do this. Because this looks quite important. I might do that after. Oh yeah, there's another one on al- algebra. And bodmas. So, oh yeah, I did that one last time. That's quite boring. Gradient's boring, algebra we did last time. So it looks like it'll be on. Science. Drugs, gas exchange, smoking, circuits, atoms, teeth, energy, displacement reactions, the four components of blood. In fact, I might do that one. Oh, but it's so long. Right, so this is what I'm gonna start off with, the four components of blood. Because that's quite important, I just need another revision card. Get out of there and then I've got this pen. I already did it off Team Move and it's, every day is a new beginning, I've got some more. Uh, got some more different colours. Uh, no rest on this. So, like, drop in the comments if you find these videos that I'm doing useful or what other, what subjects I should do it on. Because I don't really know what subjects you guys struggle with or are really good at or need help on. So I'm just gonna put the title on the. Four components. Of. Blood. Only one more week left at school, well, four and a half days for me because we finish at twelve on Friday, so. Like, the key point which I'm gonna go through, uh, like, so what are the four components of blood? So I'm gonna write that down as a question. What are? Grab a piece of paper or if you've got flashcards, then. Cool, if you don't, just a piece of paper will do. What are the four components of blood? Let me just. There we go, it's a bit blurry but it should be fine and then. So the four components of blood, I'm just gonna list them in little bullet points. The number one is the red blood cells. Red. Blood. Cells. And you've obviously got your white blood cells as well. White. Blood. Cells and then. What, not plasma. But we're at C M A. And platelets, P L A T E L E T S. There we go. That's that one. So we've got, I'll just point it out, so we've got red blood cells, white blood cells, plasma there and platelets there. Then. So what? This pen's broken. What? Does? Blood? Carry around the body? That's your next question that we're gonna answer. What does blood carry around the body? And then. So blood carries things you need, like oxygen. So I'm gonna just list bullet points. Oxygen. And glucose. And then waste products. Like carbon dioxide, because you breathe it in and then you breathe it out. No, you breathe oxygen in and carbon dioxide out, yeah. And so if you've got flashcards, it should look like that. Or if you've got lined paper, it should look as in one, but just. Yeah, you know what I mean. Then you're gonna draw like a little table. I don't even know if I've got me. So on one side you're gonna write component, C O N P O N E N T. And then on the other side you're gonna write function. And in brackets next to the function, you're just gonna put job. Like that. Obviously, I've seen it backwards, I am using my Team Move tripod to film this video, so. Hope that all goes along. Um, and then first we're gonna just write red blood cell underneath. Red blood cell. Or if you wanna, just underline it like that, sure, feel free. And the red blood cell. Carries oxygen from lungs around the body. So it carries. What did I say, carries oxygen. Carries oxygen from lungs, from lungs. And then I'm just gonna put a little arrow and then body. Like that, because I don't have much room, as much room as some of y'all maybe. Then white blood cell. My handwriting, it's sort of neat, I guess. Um. The white blood cell's fight infection. So you know, like if you've got a cold or anything. And like, and this is a bit gross, but like your snot and your phlegm's all green. If you drink loads of water, your white blood cells work faster and then your snot, it's a bit more like runny and like white. And it's a bit gross to say, but it's true. And then it like, so fights infections and stops diseases. Then plasma, next. And then you can just write platelets underneath. Like that. Plasma carries. It just carries the blood cells, so it carries. Blood cells. And platelets. And. A platelet. Of broken. Cells. Which. Form scabs. That's that one. Come on, it's so long. And then. I'm just gonna barely be able to figure out what is the word equation. For. The red, red. Blood. Cell. Reaction. I'm not gonna be able to fit it all. I only just fill, it's right at the bottom. I'm just making. There we go, it's back in brackets, right, just top on it, there we go. Then. So hemoglobin, right, this is gonna be really, really difficult to spell. H A E M O G L O B I N. I'll say it again. H A E M O G L O B I N. And add. Oxygen. And an arrow, because we use arrows in science, not equals, oxyhemoglobin. So it's literally just three letters of oxygen and then hemoglobin again. And then the oxy is just oxygen. It's like that. Oh, sorry guys. And then obviously if you wanna get like a highlighter, I don't know, which I'm gonna get, I'm bringing you all. Is it rude or? Look at all these post-it notes. These were on offer. A hundred for seventeen p. At the range, so I just cleared out all eight, because why not? So I might just get one of these, in fact now I'm using them for something else. Highlighter. Sorry guys, let me just. Where can I put you? Without your phone on there. You can almost see my dressing gown on me, but. Go away. In fact, I'll have this nice blue colour. I have got highlighter rings, which I also had a few minutes ago, these highlighter rings, so. Bringing you guys back. There. You just make me a bit brighter. There, so I just need to find the peel. There we go. So like the most important bits to remember, I would say are the four components. Actually, just go away. What's the gun? Let me just go grab some scissors real quick. Oh, nowhere are the scissors. Yeah, I was gonna have to use my mum's special nursing scissors to just chop this bit off, because this bit is doing my absolute head in. Bye bye. Right, let's find. That again. Sorry guys, this is taking such a long time. But I really wanna show you all what they look like. There we go, finally. Now where are those stupid scissors? So that's what it looks like, so it's literally just a bit of see-through colour. Also, what you can highlight is like what the jobs are, so its functions and the word equation. That's what it looks like so far. I don't know, does that help? That was on, doesn't really need to be on though, but. There we go, it's nice and clear now. And then. It's function. Where, where's the hell? It's the P O L O. She got nowhere to go. Nowhere to go. There we go. That's the bottom one and then, I'm not gonna do the functions because I just don't really want. I could turn that light off. Um. Just obviously like at the end of each page, I put a star note on what's, I think the most important bit is to remember. And obviously if you're picking geography for GCSE, you'll have to revise hard for that, because you wanna be in top sets for your GCSE subject. Um. That's actually pretty. So I'm gonna do the geography now. I just got my end of year tests back. Like test scores, I haven't got all the tests back yet. Let's go grab the test score sheet. Sort this out real quick. I get my history paper back on Tuesday. My computing hopefully back on Wednesday and my English back on Wednesday. So English I haven't got a score for yet, but maths I got fifty-three out of a hundred, that's the hopefully, the final grade. So that was, um, an F. What's that coming up? Geography, twenty-four out of forty-seven, that's another F. So I'm just making out of this. F, F, history, I got nine, four, no, seventeen out of twenty-nine, that's another F. Computing, I got thirty out of forty, so that's like a B or a C. French, I got forty-eight out of fifty-two, I really like French, I love my French teacher. And science, I got thirty-eight out of sixty, so that was a D. And then obviously I'm waiting for English and that's it. And that's all my test scores. Um. But anyway, back on to the geography. Oh no, this is coming off, let me just. I'll use a green one for geography, because I think you all know why. So we're gonna be looking at. The coastal processes. And landforms. So title, coastal processes. Processes. And land. Yeah, so anyway, I haven't even asked how's your guys' day going? Mine was really good, but really, really warm. But yeah, what have you guys been up to? So our first like starter question. Is how? Do you? Think? Wind? Affects coastlines? How do you think wind affects? That's with an A for affects, not with an E. Coast. So that's the starter question, so I just want you to have like a thirty second quick think or pause the video, because I'm gonna go through the answer. But if you want you to think to yourself, not cheat or Google or ask anybody else for help, I want you to see if you think you know the answer. So how do you think wind affects coastlines? And we're gonna put underneath it, we always start, if it's a how do you think, we always start with, I think. The sentence starter is literally in the question. I think wind. Affect. Coastlines. By. The waves. That was the right answer. So key points of the lesson then. Coastlines are shaped by a number of processes such as erosion. Transportation and deposition. These processes can lead to a number of different types of landforms, such as caves, arches, stacks and stumps. And different types of landforms are caused due to several influences such as the geology of the coast. So I'm definitely gonna have to use the back of this thingy anyway. So we're just gonna note down. Coastlines. Shaped. By lots. Of processes. Um, and then E G. Erosion. Deposition, I'm not gonna be able to fit that on, but I'm gonna try my best. I have deposition and transportation. These processes can, can lead to a number of different types of landforms, I'm just gonna put in brackets. Can lead to. Different landforms. E G. Caves. Arches. Stacks. And stomps. Don't like that so far, sorry, I haven't been showing you what it is. That's it there. And then, different types of landforms are caused due to several influences such as the geology of the coast, I'm not gonna bother with writing that one. If you want to write that one, feel free and now wherever, put that highlight in the ring. Because that's not late, it's there, never mind. So. If you want that some. There, which one is it again? Well, I think it was, I'll just read it out again. Different types of landforms are caused due to several influences such as the geology of the coast. Then. What we are going to do is we're gonna split. I will pick in half and create another table. Oh no. Oh well, and it's erosion. And. Trans. Partation. So, somebody just smashed downstairs, but I don't know what it is. My stepdad just come in, that's who you've probably heard of in the know. So erosion was a few different keywords that we're gonna have to write down, so you might want to. So abrasion is the first one. So this is where sediment wears away the surface, so sediment. Wears. Away. Surface. Solution, I'm gonna definitely run out of room. Chemicals. Dissolve rock. If you want in it in full detail, it's chemicals in the water, so certain types of rocks and then attrition. Uh, and then erosion just means rocks worn away. And transportation means movement. Because if you transport things from one place to another, you are moving it. Um. Attrition, rocks colla- attrition. Rocks. Rocks collide. With each other. Arrow. Making. Them smoother. And more rounded. And then hydraulic action, I don't know where I'm gonna write that, because. I'm literally just gonna go, if you guys wanna look at that real quick, I'm just gonna turn the light back on again, just so you guys can see. Into the light, can you guys read? Obviously, you're not gonna be able to read here, but. So I'll just quickly go through it again. Erosion, oh no, abrasion, sediment wears away the surface, solution, chemicals dissolve rocks. And attrition, rocks make, rocks collide making them smoother. Then I'm just gonna add on to the back of this. Hydraulic action. When waves crash against a cliff, they let air flow into the rocks. So waves crash. Against, or against, 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 whatever. Against. Cliff. And then. Let air flow into the rocks. That's that one for you guys. Erosion and hydraulic action, waves crash against the cliff, letting air flow into the rocks. Transportation, there's literally four words. Suspension. Lighter material floats in the water, so lighter. Material. Floats. Traction. Hopefully I can fit all this on in there. Sure. Larger rocks roll along the seabed, so larger. Rocks roll. Roll along. The sea. Bed, I'm literally gonna run out of room again. Solution. Chalk or other materials get dissolved, so other materials. Are dissolved. And then on the back, I'm literally just gonna write transportation again. Salination. Smaller rocks. That makes more sense. Smaller rocks, if they are too heavy to be suspended, pop along the seabed, so smaller rock. Pop along. The sea. Bed. And then that's, I'll do that side first. And then this side on the back as well. And like, and that's all I'm gonna do, because it is getting a little late now. Well, not late, but. I'm gonna highlight it in. My own timeline. Unless, you want me to wa- unless you wanna watch me highlight it. These rings are cool, it's just a fa- cutting it also. So the four things, uh, yeah, four things to remember are the four points of erosion. A- a- abrasion, solution, attrition and hydraulic action. The four words of transportation, suspension, traction, solution and saltation. The three coastal processes, erosion, transportation and deposition. And what can these processes lead to? That would just, the first question that we wrote in a different colour was just a starter question. And but. That's it. Sorry, I had to quickly pause then, because I would just got showered to ask you if I wanted some sweets, because we're watching a movie soon. But I'm going down after I've done this video anyway. But I'm just gonna highlight it and, yeah. That's it. I'm gonna do another session soon. But just drop in the comments, like, what subjects you want me to do? Well, sorry guys. What subjects you want me to do? What subjects you struggle with? What subjects you're good at, or drop a comment if you think I'm doing well. And yeah, have a really good day, guys. Thank you so much for watching. And I'm really sorry it took very long video. But yeah, thank you so, thank you, thank you so much for watching. Have a really good day and have a really good week, have a really good month, have a really good year. Have a good rest of your life. If you're gonna watch me again, please subscribe to the channel, like the video and comment. Today's word comment is study, hashtag study. Or even if you make a video and tag me in it. And subscribe. Try get me to a hundred subscribers before the end of the summer holidays. That's my goal. So fingers crossed we can get there. And I might be doing a giveaway as well, so. Thank you guys so much for watching and peace out.